Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council being held on November 29th, 2022. You can call to order at 3:08 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadran.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Kusakian.
Here. May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, special public meeting of the City Council, was posted on Tuesday, November 22nd, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, thank you. Before we move ahead with the first item, there's two items on this agenda, and we will be taking the second item, which is the consideration of naming intersections off this agenda to have it reviewed and brought back at a later time for discussion and consideration. With that, can we have the first?
Will that be to develop a policy, or just on those two items that?
I think, well, looking at this report, I think that staff needs to do a little bit more work on it, and I think we do need to probably bring it back with the policy component, or a component that fits into existing policy that we may have pertaining to monuments. And I don't think anyone is necessarily against the recommendations, I just think we need to flush out the criteria by which we do it. So, not going into any further direction, I immediately saw the city attorney's eyes dart over here. We are not having a discussion on the second item. This is a discussion about moving the item and the reason for it, and with that, may we have the first item read into the record?
First item is community development regarding Alex Theater updates. A motion to note and file 12-month Alex Theater update and provide direction regarding utilization of city days at the theater.
All right. Mr. Galanian, Mr. Calvert.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kusakian, members of City Council. Believe it or not, it's been already 12 months, just over a year, no?
Six. Less than six, with the official agreement in place.
With the official agreement. But it was November of 2021 that we had a changeover of the management of the Alex Theater. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Calvert to give you more details as to what's been happening since then.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. That's actually an important point to bring up in terms of how long the agreement has been in place and kind of sets the tone for the entire presentation. SAS has been managing the theater for just a little under six months under the official contract, but we wanted to check in, provide an update, just to inform council what's been going on, what we have to look forward to. This won't be a deep dive into necessarily financial matters at this point, we would provide that at the one-year check-in mark. Again, they've only been managing for a little bit under six months, and about half of that has actually been for, you know, one of the slowest periods of the year. So we don't have a complete picture yet in terms of that kind of financial performance, but that's what we would bring next July as part of an update. But what we really want to provide this afternoon is just, again, kind of, you know, some of the improvements and changes that have been made, some of the shows that have happened. And then, as noted, we would like to get direction in terms of how we use those 12 city days. So we'll touch on kind of that process that staff is recommending and get council's feedback on that. So the official management agreement began in July of 2022. SAS did take over on an interim basis, starting in November of 2021. Again, most of this information that we're providing today is really based on July going forward, because there weren't certain things that were in place under that interim agreement, such as collecting the facility fund fee, things of that nature. So far this year, they've hosted 15 sold-out shows, they have another nine to 10 coming through the rest of this year as well, a number of notable shows coming for the holiday season, Nutcracker being one of them. So they sold out 15, another nine or 10 coming. When we say sold out, that is within 100 seats of the 1,400-seat capacity, so we're looking at 1,300 tickets being sold for those shows. As part of this management agreement, the city also assumed responsibility of maintenance systems as something that's been folded into public works contracts, so any of those kind of big items. HVAC, things of that nature, Public Works Department is now handling that for us. The operator themselves are responsible for kind of day-to-day maintenance, changing of light bulbs, refreshing paint, things of that nature. There was a heavy focus in the beginning here to really kind of resolve some deferred maintenance issues that were in place, really so we didn't see any further deteriorations, really kind of stabilization of those systems, HVAC being one of them. We've also seen a number of other physical improvements when it comes to the equipment, which we'll touch on here shortly. Just some examples of some of the shows that have occurred recently, and some of the promotional items, essentially, that the Alex Theater has featured in. One of the goals here was to really broadcast that brand and that name well beyond just the borders of Glendale, and turn this into a regional destination, so you can see a couple news stories there from some of the events that were hosted. Barcelona Flamenco Ballet, the Hocus Focus Film Festival, all of these kind of gathering larger attention from just beyond Glendale's border, which, again, that is one of the objectives from this management company, is to really kind of broadcast that out there. Part of that is also including branding, we'll touch on that shortly, that was part of the actual management agreement, that SAS does provide branding, again, trying to put the name of the Alex Theater out there as far as we can. As part of the capital improvements, a number of pieces of equipment have been upgraded, or in the process and will be continuously. Part of the original management agreement, there was kind of a rough outline of the anticipation of some of the improvements that would be made. Some that we've seen and pictured here, the audio mixing board, sound equipment. This was really to try to modernize the theater in terms of being able to host some of those more entertainment-focused shows, if you will, as we go forward. This is one of those kind of key, critical pieces that needed to be done. They've also upgraded other equipment, such as the piano, audio equipment, digital projection system. Should be noted that that was part of the original agreement, that the city would help fund these, largely because we know that the Alex Theater will always serve as a theater for the city of Glendale, no matter who's managing it. So with that in mind, that that equipment should ultimately belong to the city at the end of the day. But we've seen a number of pieces of equipment that have been updated, and they'll continue to do so as we go through that kind of capital improvement plan that they had developed before. They've also developed new relationships. Ticketmicket is one of them. This was really intended to enhance the reach of Armenian-interested audiences in some of the shows that they put on. A new partnership with Ticketmaster, that was really helpful in terms of being able, again, kind of get Alex Theater's name out there, let it be more prominent within the region. As noted in prior discussions with the current manager, this has actually helped accelerate some ticket sales in some events, and maybe arguably some of these events could have hosted even more shows that we really weren't anticipating, because Ticketmaster's really kind of helped get that name out there and get that prominence out there and sell those tickets quicker. They've done a number of shows for benefit purposes, one of them being for Armenian soldiers, they provided a 50% discount for those shows, Armenian Revolutionary Federation, another 50% discount. And these are important to note, because really, in these kind of first few months, they have really maintained the kind of community-oriented focus of the theater. We know that we are looking forward to a kind of entertainment transition at a certain point, once we see these improvements, capital improvements get made. But for now, we've seen a pretty heavy focus on kind of community-oriented events. In fact, all resident companies have continued to maintain their performances. We did see the Gay Men's Chorus drop off for a year, but they have since returned. But we have not lost any of what we would consider to be kind of resident companies during this period of time. So again, kind of return and continuation of longstanding performances, the Gay Men's Chorus, Glendale Youth Orchestra, and the Alex Theater and SAS served as a leading sponsor for Cruz Night, in fact, giving away a custom, I believe it's a Fender guitar, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Miles? I'm not all that musically inclined, but providing that to one of the winners of one of the categories from Cruz Night. So really trying to be ingrained within the community, the events that occur around the Alex Theater. As mentioned, part of their work is to also enhance the brand and identity. Here's a couple examples of some marketing materials. The image on the far right, there's a goal and intent to use some of our days and months that we have on the white poles for downtown, to hang banners for the Alex Theater, really kind of branding that block, that that block is really intended to be kind of the heart and hub of the Arts and Entertainment District and the Alex Theater serving as a major destination. And then where we're looking to get direction from City Council, we have 12 days as part of that management agreement for city use. The use of the theater is free, the labor is not, that should be kept in mind. What we are asking from council, are there predetermined days that council would like to go ahead and essentially lock in? We know that the Armenian Genocide Commemorative Event is one of those. Are there others that council would like to entertain now? If not, what we're recommending is that if there are requests that are brought to City Council or to the management company themselves, that we get a 60-day lead time on that. And the reason why we ask for that 60-day lead time is, one, so if, so council can help make that decision and determine if that day should be used for a particular event, we would like to be able to put together a council report, come to City Council and offer that report and provide, council to provide feedback and direction whether or not to use one of those 12 days for a particular event. If someone, and then actually following that, that gives the management team enough time, enough lead-up time to secure the date, prepare for the event as well. So what we're asking for there is to have a 60-day lead time in terms of any events that we may use for that 12 days, or the 12 days per year. And then we're looking for any direction that council may have regarding any additional dates they may want to lock in. Just a couple other things I would note. As I mentioned, there's another nine or 10 shows for the rest of this year that will be sold out, starting in February, nearly every weekend for the Alex Theater is already booked between now and June. So we are seeing that schedule fill up very quickly, so it's one thing to keep in mind if we're going to consider securing any dates, but also just wanted to put that out there to show that we are seeing that calendar fill up fairly quickly. We don't have a lot of information right now on the facility fund fee, again, largely because we don't have anything from the fourth quarter of this calendar year, and the third quarter is obviously very slow because of a summer. We do anticipate on an annual basis, that was supposed to bring in 350 to about $500,000 per year. When we come back next July, we'll provide more of that financial information, once we've seen a full year go by in terms of SAS's management of the theater. So as mentioned, very brief presentation, but I am happy to answer any questions, and we're here to get feedback regarding that 12-day use for the theater.
So, one of the days I was thinking that we should have a day set aside is we just got through our Tech Week, and I don't know if we use the Alex for any of our events for Tech Week, but moving forward, I would recommend that we set aside at least one of those days, if my colleagues are in agreement, for a potential Tech Week-related event. It could be a keynote speaker, it could be a panel, we don't know who we may be able to get in the future to come and give a talk, whoever it may be, it could be someone that could fill in 1,300 seats. So definitely, as one of our key events moving forward, I would recommend that. Do my colleagues have questions or thoughts as to either the 12 days or any other issues? And the other thing I would mention is that I know that there was discussion about the neon lighting on the spire. The spire, the last few times, has kind of looked a little off. Anything that can be done to light that up again and restore it would be appreciated, because it is probably one of the most iconic features of the Alex. But I appreciate their involvement and willingness to work within the community, thank you. Who would like to comment or ask questions? Councilmember Brotman, go ahead.
Anyway, thanks, excuse me, thanks for the report. Couple things I wanted to check on. So, first of all, I think you answered my question, I just wanted to double-check. The resident companies, so we have had no net loss?
Correct, we have not lost any.
Okay, that's good news.
Some have changed the scale of their performance, but none have left.
Okay, what do you mean by that?
Some are just doing truncated performances, maybe smaller versions of what they had done before, or just kind of aligned differently than maybe they had before, but we have not lost any of them.
But they have not gone and gone somewhere else?
Correct.
As their kind of base?
Correct.
And, you know, I noticed when I looked at the list of events, they're, you know, primarily community-related events, some films, some filming, I think, but as far as the bigger acts, what's coming down the pike? Are there kind of some, you know, well-known names coming over the next six months? You said it's pretty booked out, so I'd be interested in hearing what's in the plan.
I would actually ask Miles if he's able to disclose any of this information yet?
Can I come up?
Yes, please, thank you.
I don't have any big names.
You all can do it here, yeah.
Thanks for the question. I don't have any big names to give you yet. We are in the process of developing more relationships and getting attention from the larger music industry to the Alex. Part of what we had put together, the 10-year plan, the CIP of improvements, was so that we would be prepared to host them in a way that would make sense for them to want to come here. There's a lot of competition for those big names, and we need the right audio system, we need the lighting system, if not, we need the dressing room renovation, which we have planned for next fiscal year. There are certain things in place that allow us to compete for those acts, and that was the primary reason behind pretty much most all of the equipment upgrades, outside of just sort of general keeping up with, you know, some technology things. But without those, it makes it very difficult to compete with the other venues that are better equipped, which is why we're heading there. So, but I don't have any in the first six months of a big name to drop on you. I probably will in the next six months.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're going to have some of that done. Starting, the budget for the primary renovations of the space starts in July, so during the next fiscal year is when we're going to be doing a lot of that, the dressing room renovations and getting, we don't really have a star dressing room. It's hard to invite a big star into a space that's like, not so great. So that's part of when we reach out to them, we want to be able to host them in the right manner, so.
Okay, so you're saying after next summer?
Well, I'm not sure, because of course, you know, in construction with this, and particularly with getting used to the way that those kind of public works projects get bid on and everything, the timing of it is still, you know, a little bit up in the air. I know that it's funded for next year, and so in '23, '24, I'm hoping, we're all hopeful that we're going to get it done in the, you know, before the end of '23, and then we'll be prepared to make offers into the spring of '24 for those kind of acts. So because we need the space done, and then we need to be able to, you know, make offers. Typically, concert offers of that type go out about six months ahead, or further.
Okay. But when you said you might have some names to drop in the next six months?
Yeah, because I'm talking to a few people right now.
Are you talking about the second half of next calendar year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, '23.
But as far as being ready to do kind of routine acts, that's out still another?
Well, the, I want to make sure that we're ready. You only get one chance to really reach out, there's only two major promoters in, you know, in the area. There's a third one that I've already made a relationship with and we have done a show with. It was a whole new audience, it was called, it was on the slide, it's called The Residence, avant-garde rock band, there was a bunch of Hollywood folks that came in, never been here before, never even probably heard of the theater before. So I did reach out with that show, and it did okay, but that was with Niederlander Concerts, which is the third biggest promoter in Los Angeles. And I'm getting into the minutia a little bit, but feel free to ask more.
The other thing I wanted to ask about was branding, so I noticed if you go back to Slide 7, is that, are those graphics, are those, do those predate SAS, or are these new?
These are brand new.
So you went through a whole exercise of developing new kind of?
We hired a branding company.
Okay.
To work on a whole Alex brand, yeah.
Okay, did we, is that something that we're involved with, or is that something we really passed on to SAS to handle all this? Because obviously, I mean, you're going to be around for a long time, but this is a brand, you know, I mean, this is really kind of our theater and a brand that we're going to be living with. Is this, this is all done, this is all out there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This was part of the management agreement, that that branding be executed by the management company.
I don't have a problem with it, it's just, yeah, it's just, I didn't, I didn't realize that this was all happening. So going forward, it's the Alex?
Well, the Alex is what we ended up with in working with the branding company as a sort of truncated way and a way of kind of bringing it forward. You know, the branding guy's so much better at talking about the brand than I am. But the Alex Theater is in use, we use it all the time, we haven't really changed the name of it, but the brand going out there is that logo right there, sure. So, and it has a lot of different ways it can be presented. Clearly, you know, you're seeing that it's movable, it can be vertical, it can do a lot of interesting things. I actually have a whole, the whole brand guidelines with me, I brought it in case you might want to see it.
I was probably over my head. Okay, thanks.
As long as I think staff has a copy of it and they can share it with council, there may be folks that are curious to look at it and familiarize themselves with it. Councilmember Devine, and then Councilmember Asadran, and then Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Brad Lee, for this report. So this hasn't turned out to be the great disaster that we were some were expecting?
I don't believe so, I mean, we've had a number of sold-out shows, and we have a number coming as well, so I believe that we are off to a solid start. It's, you know, I think we'll have more information to be able to demonstrate the performance of the theater come July, when we can provide the fiscal information as well.
Okay, okay. Well, I think with this many sold-out shows, that's pretty good. I love the branding, I love that. I think it's, I think it's some of the best that I've seen in the last couple of years. So the marketing, I think, is really good. And I'm happy to see that some have come back, the Gay Men's Chorus, the Ballet, et cetera, that's encouraging. At this point, I really don't have any specific dates, but I noticed on your calendar, the events that you gave us, there were some graduations. Now, are they scheduling again? I mean, is that something, are those, but they're paying, right? That's not like our?
No, yes, everyone's been paying, we don't have any mechanism for the free events yet, that's part of what was brought up. I do have some opinions on that, I would be happy to help get that, like, worked out into a workable way, so that we can communicate about it. The, yeah, the graduations went really well.
Good.
Yeah, everyone's coming back. So, from my previous experience, you know, we had over 85% of our calendar full of returning clients.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, so once that gets set up here, you know, that's part of my, that's part of my business, is that, you know, instead of trying to have to find new clients all the time to just do a really good job doing their shows, and then they want to come back all the time, so.
Well, I was really impressed with the diversity of the programming as well.
I thought it went well, thanks.
Yeah, we had Filipino concerts, we had Spanish dancers, we had the Armenian events, I think I said Filipino, you know, all sorts of diverse programming. How do people find out about what's at the Alex? Well, and plus, we've always called it the Alex. You know, it's always not been, I'm going to the, every time you say Alex, you have the before, and I think in every conversation I think I've ever had, so just to, I just wanted to kind of mention that. How do people find out about the programming at the Alex? Would they have to go to the website or the?
Well, so, a couple different ways. I wanted to say that about the Alex, it did come from branding, that was part of what came up, was that most of the theaters do get truncated into the name of it, just the first couple, you know, not the theater at the end. And that's where the idea came from with the branding group. So anyways, they find out about it through our, through the website that we have, which we're developing, and we will be launching a new website, I think it's going to be done in January, but with all the new branding. And also, now that we have Ticketmaster, Ticketmaster, it broadcasts the events through their entire network, and they have, I think, 6 million people with Ticketmaster accounts in Los Angeles, and part of the reason of bringing them in was because of that ability to get like the word out there more, because people do use it as a bit of a search engine for shows. A third way is through Goldstar, which, I don't know if you guys are familiar? Sure. Yeah, it's a great way to get like discounted tickets, and so we've got, we have an account with Goldstar for shows. For our shows, because we have presented some shows, now that's new at the Alex for a lot of years. Previously, it's been solely rental house, including the resident companies are also renting the venue, but we have actually done some co-promotion and presenting on our own of shows, so we're hiring the act, we're advertising the show and selling the tickets ourselves. So one of the things that I like to do is actually put up posters and postcards in all of the neighborhoods, because there's a very, like, sort of, it lets, it's sort of brand building in letting the neighborhood know, hey, there's something new going on here, we've had our posters up and down brand, we have a company that does it, it's really, it's really a cool thing to do, and they've been in Burbank and Pasadena and all the surrounding areas, you know, several thousand of them go up when we do our shows, and we get really good feedback from the places that they're in. People say, oh, I love to see this stuff happening there, you know, the Halloween Film Festival was a big hit for people to see that we were doing something like that again.
I haven't gotten one of those announcements.
Well, it doesn't go through the mail, it's out in the community.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, that's my, that's my issue, I guess I'm old school, not just old, I'm old school, but we have, do have a small local newspaper here, and I think that maybe if you put an ad, you know, some announcements in, that might help as well, because like I say, I didn't know you were doing all of these shows, and I should know that.
Sure.
And that's probably the only way that I would, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't Google it, I wouldn't go to any of your websites to do that, but if I saw it, yeah, I might say, well, oh no, the Ballet is here, that sort of thing.
Sure, okay, well, that's, I'll take a note of that, for sure.
All right, thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
Councilmember Asadran?
Thank you for the report, and for the great updates, by the way. First time I saw it, I actually thought of the Pantages, because their logo is just that, so it feels like a modern version of. How do, how do you work with nonprofits? How do they contact you? How do you decide who you're going to give a discount to? What's the process like?
So nonprofits let us know of their status. We have a whole way of taking in new clients. So there's a form that they fill out after we talk on the phone, and they can list their nonprofit status right there on the intake form, and from there, we talk about their show, and we have, a standard discount is 25% off the license fees or rent, but then for the Armenian shows, we have been doing a deeper one when it's going to a good cost. So we've had another one since then as well, because of the situation.
So, were those two events that were listed, the only, the only two organizations that came to you for discounts? I'm just trying to understand the process.
No, we have, you know, I probably should have had a whole list, but I think that we've probably done, I don't know, at least 10 or 15 nonprofit shows in the first year, where they all got the discount, including some of the resident companies, who are all nonprofits, by the way. Including some of the resident companies, who are all nonprofits, by the way, that they also receive a discount. So that's the LA Ballet, the LA Chamber Orchestra, the Glendale Youth Orchestra, the Gay Men's Chorus, Alex Film Society, and Musical Theater Guild. All of those are nonprofits, and also receive a discount based upon that status.
Have your fees changed?
Yeah, they have.
How much higher are we talking?
Quite a bit, yeah. It was my belief that it was severely undervalued, which does not add to the health of the venue or its success in the community or in the industry. Quality is something you pay for, it's not something to give away. So no, they have increased quite a bit. But I do have a sliding scale structure in place for fees, for rental fees. Because we are approached by a decent number, because we've been in transition from the previous management and dealing with the, sort of the return of people to us for the first time, who had previously booked with them, and they were used to paying a very, very small amount, and/or getting days for nearly free, for like, loading days, prep days, taking up space in the calendar without actually paying for it. You know, I have, I've had to be very flexible and give people sort of a transitional year of, like, we're going to keep your fees really low this year, next time, your budget's going to need to be higher, so you can be prepared for that. And that's been received really well. But I do have a sliding scale of fees based upon capacity of sales, like, if they reach a certain level of sales, then the fees go higher, because the ticket sales are higher to support it, so...
Okay. And then I think one of the days, depending on how my colleagues feel, but I know that we had brought up Women's Equity Day, and for staff to talk to the Women's Commission, and so if the Commission is interested in hosting that, would require the Alex, maybe that's a space that we can utilize for that.
Sure. Okay, Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. Hi, Miles.
Hi.
So, in all my 17 years on the council, I never got more hate mail than I did when we decided to pivot and go with your company. And I'm glad that you're doing well. I'm glad that you're starting to build those ties with the community. There are still some naysayers out there, you know, sharpshooters, waiting their time to take a shot at you. So keep at it, keep up the good work. I sort of want to get on what Paula was saying, is that Hocus Focus Horror Weekend looked really interesting, but I didn't know anything about it. So please, utilize GTV6 for community events, bring someone to council, maybe you, you know, show us like a trailer to one of those films the week or two before Halloween, just for example, or if it's a Nutcracker, or something that's of interest, sort of broaden the outreach.
Okay.
That you, you know, let people know what you have coming in.
Sure.
I think that'll help a lot as well. I can't think of many days, you know, that I would earmark for city projects. I think Tech Week, you know, was a good one, the Armenian genocide is good. I really can't think of many other that we've been, you know, that we've said, oh gee, I wish we had a free day at the Alex. But I'm sure that'll arise, and as we start to think more about some of the things that we do. So it's good, just, you know, keep it up, and I think you're doing a good job. It was great to see you at Cruise Night, and I don't remember the previous management being involved in Cruise Night. I may have been wrong, but it was nice seeing you there. I'm not sure if you booked the bands, or were involved with them, they were great bands, whoever decided, maybe it was Parks, or, but I know you were there somehow involved in that.
We were the primary sponsor, and we gave away a trophy. I got to pick the car, it was cool.
Great.
And I got the guitar made, so they could have something special. Hoping to do that every year.
Yeah, that was very good.
I'm a big car fan.
I enjoyed that. I enjoyed seeing your involvement in that community event, and I'm sure there will be others, maybe with some sort of relationship to the theater.
Sure.
And, you know, just keep up the good work, and I know you're just started. I didn't realize that the star's dressing room was such an important feature to bring someone in. I've never been in a star's dressing room before, but, you know, we've seen movies and stuff, and you sort of imagine the mirrors with the bulbs, and I don't know what else, but...
Usually, there's a private restroom, is the most primary thing.
Okay.
And we do have one, but it's about the size of a broom cupboard.
I see.
And it's embarrassing to actually ask a star to sit in there, it's just not a space that's personal.
Well, we just upgraded that. I mean, before, six, seven years ago, we had nothing.
Sure.
But, you know, let us know, we'd love to work with you on that, too. If that's what's going to bring in the star power...
Yeah.
We definitely don't want to lose out, because it's a small restroom.
Well, it's one of the, it is, we already are working with staff, with, to develop the design, and some of the upgrade that you did to the building is excellent. There were some choices that I think were, they didn't build one of those dressing rooms, they should have. They did build three large cast dressing rooms, but then didn't build actually a good star one. And we can, by reconfiguring some things in a fairly affordable manner, build two, actually two nice star dressing rooms in that same new wing, transforming some maintenance space, which is not needed. So, yeah, so that's part of the renovations that we're going to do. It's well-handled down the path already, you know, towards working with staff about it.
Great, thank you.
The issue with the seating in the balcony area, that was a concern when we were having initial discussions, that's no longer an issue? We're able to seat people in the balcony area, okay?
We do seat people in the balcony areas, and we haven't had any falls, which is good. It is part of the budget for next fiscal year, to do some improvements in there, to make that, I guess I'm going to, to make it better. You know, if you remember, the consultant had a really high price and like a low price, and we're shooting for that low price, but I think that the recommendations that were made were solid, and we're going forward with that sort of an idea. But that's in the next fiscal years.
All right.
Yeah.
And I'm not necessarily familiar with what's happening in the filming industry. I know that we're in a, we live in a region and in town that's close to the biz, so to speak, and, but previously, there would be filmings like Last Comic Standing, some of these big shows. I noticed that there's a lot of commercials, and there was a couple that had a studio name attached to it, but didn't say specifically what it is. What do you think would it take to bring back some of those larger productions, or more noticeable productions?
Well...
Is that not part of the current business model? Is that going to...
No, absolutely is, Mayor. I've done a lot of that kind of television in my background, and have a lot of, the entire industry of presentation television are my colleagues. I have already started talking to some of them about bringing some shows in, including a comedy, a multi-day comedy special like Last Comic. The Alex is known in the comedy world because of that show, absolutely. I mean, that's how I first heard of the Alex, actually. So we have done a bunch of location filming in our first year with Warner Brothers, and that was for a new show by the makers of Lost, which hasn't been released yet, called Mrs. Davis. We became like actually a foundational location for that story. So they came back three times, and may come back season after season for multiple shoots, which is pretty cool. As far as the presentation television with audiences, like Last Comic Standing, I am in talks right now, I have some dates on hold in, I think it's April or something. So we will expect to see that, too, absolutely.
There's been this proliferation of these comedy specials on Netflix and others, where they have theaters, I mean, just looking at it, you know, when you see little clips of it, they look like theaters that are about the size of the Alex, or seems ideally suited for that type of a show, given our proximity, again, to be in Hollywood, to have a lot of the A-listers. I know that Jay Leno is going to be, I just read somewhere after his accident, and we wish him well and speedy recovery, but he'll be appearing at Flappers. So I don't think Burbank has a theater that seats as many people as Alex does, if I'm correct. So, you know, maybe we tap into some of the artists and folks there. I do think it's fine to do something, and appropriate to do something related to women and women's issues, on whether it's International Women's Day, or whatever day, Commission on Status of Women may need it, so I'd be happy to support that. And the last comment I would make is in this current period where we are very, trying to be more aware, and, you know, we know better, so we're trying to do better. I know that this is probably a small sampling of just promotional materials, but it would be nice to have a little bit of diversity, maybe some people of color, persons of color featured in the advertisements, maybe some local artists, people from the diverse community that make up Glendale, we're a very diverse city. So to take that into consideration, so it doesn't look like it's very, just a homogenous...
There's no men up there, is that what you mean?
Everything. I meant diversity and equity in all aspects, in all aspects. Large, small...
Men are people, too.
Short, tall, yes, you're right, men are people, too. So, of all, of all, just...
Maybe that's why I liked them.
Yeah. I think it would be great, yeah.
Hundred percent.
So, people notice those things, as I did in others, so. So that's about it, thank you very much. This is a note to file, correct? Note and file?
If I may, Mayor and council, two other things. I just wanted to get clarity around, I know you mentioned International Women's Day, and then Equity Week, if I'm not mistaken, it's an entire week, correct? Is there a preference for either one of those, or...
I would leave it up to the Commission on Status of Women, but Councilmember Asadriyan, what would you, your preference, or what's your recommendation?
That's what my recommendation is to check.
Correct. And then if I can add one more thing, as we've been having discussions, as all of council knows, recently, we had a delegation visit us from Artsakh. And we had conversations regarding how we may be able to help, especially as we establish a new sister-city relationship. One of the conversations that came up was the ability to help a theater there that is currently dormant. We are currently in discussions with SAS and the management company, as you know, we're swapping out and exchanging equipment. That presents a very unique opportunity for us to be able to donate that equipment to that theater. And then we're looking at, in the second quarter, hosting some sort of benefit or fundraiser to assist that theater and the Artsakh region in general. We just want to make sure that we put that out there, and council was aware of that.
Thank you.
And something that we'll be continuing to work on.
That was one of the asks by Lernikov Anisian, who was, he was one of the representatives or Deputy Minister of Culture from Artsakh, and they had mentioned that they would like that, and, you know, it was, I think, an interesting request for us, because we didn't expect that to be at the top of the priorities, but when you think about what those people, what the people of Artsakh and Mar Duni have endured, sometimes the arts are what help lighten the burden of life that weighs us down. So we appreciate your efforts in helping them realize those goals. I think I speak on behalf of all my colleagues when we thank you for that, and the people of Artsakh. So are there any callers on this item?
Mayor, there are no callers.
Okay, if there's no callers, we have no cards here in chambers, would anyone like to make a motion to note and file the report?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadriyan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Kusakian?
Yes, thank you. With that, may we have a motion to adjourn this meeting, a motion and a second, actually.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, we stand adjourned. We'll now move on to the actual city council meeting. All right, let's call the city council meeting to order at 3:49 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadriyan?
Here.
Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Kusakian?
Here.
Please read the closed session items into the record.
1A Public Employment Principal Assistant City Attorney. 1B has been moved. 1C Conference with Real Property Negotiators. Property location, real property, generally located at the terminus of New York Avenue near Park Vista Drive, commonly referred to as Mountain Oaks. Negotiating parties, F E and M Incorporated. Employees Defined Contribution Plan Trust dated July 10, 1984. Agency negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Lonian, John Taktalian, Michael J. Garcia, Jillian Van Meiden, Bradley Calvert, Jason Bradford, and Onik Belonikian. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the acquisition of the property. D would be conference with legal counsel pending litigation. F E and M Incorporated. Employees Defined Contribution Plan Trust dated July 10, 1984 versus the city of Glendale, Errol, L.A.S.C. case number BS 16989.
All right, thank you very much. Do we expect to report out on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, we anticipate reporting on item 1A.
Okay, so anticipating that, and having taken 1B off this calendar, we will now